Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. And I apologize for us being a couple of minutes late, or six minutes late. We are going to have opening exercises. Are you, okay. And Ms. Hammel had just some to share real quick.
No, I just wanted to ask you if you'd do a moment of silence for after when she gets away from her. I gotta call this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, it, we had special prayer at church. Ms. Nguyen has been a longstanding member of our church and just a wonderful educator that has affected so many lives. And I had one of the youth just say to me this week how she was still inspiring young people because he had just graduated and wanted to continue singing and his academics. And Ms. Nguyen had talked to him and said, please, don't give up. I loved hearing you sing at church. Please keep doing that. So Ms. Nguyen has had a good and positive effect on so many lives.
And I spoke to family this morning and they said they were blessed because there's only three days that she was really, where she wasn't able to do things. Because last Wednesday, she went to her funeral. Thursday, she went out with her family. Friday, she was out around town doing something else. So they felt blessed having those many days.
Hundred and two.
It's supposed to be a blast together. She didn't give them a speech.
Well, when the product came and interviewed her, Erin was amazed at everything we talked about, she needs dates, times, and everything. So she had a good great life.
Thank you, board members. And we're going to go into our workshop portion and we're going to go through, that would be 1A and partnership of healthcare facilities with Citrus County Sheriff's Office.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have some information that I would like to share with you. I'd first like to welcome and thank some guests for being here with us. Ray Tomlinson, he is the President of Crown and Vice President of Crown Care here. And we have Terry Ginter, who is a Director of Clinical Operations at the Wellness Center. And we have Christine Hernandez, who is also the Director of Clinical Operations at our Wellness Center. So welcome, thank you for being here. And they're available for any discussion or questions that you may have. We are here to discuss the potential partnership with the Sheriff's Office in our Wellness Center venture. And they approached us quite some time ago about this possibility. And our commitment was that we did not want to do this or even consider this unless there was an advantage for us, of course. And as long as we could provide the continued services that we do have, we have a lot of success at the Wellness Center, we have a lot of happy employees there, we didn't want to hinder that in any way. So our continued commitment is that there will be the minimal wait time that we've been able to enjoy, the quality service, the clean welcoming facility that we have, and the appointment availability. I did have an opportunity to share this and discuss this with our insurance committee as well, that we meet regularly. Mrs. Bryan is a part of that committee. And our committee does wholeheartedly support this venture as well after discussing it. The one main thing that kept coming up is the appointment availability. So just to assure you, this is going to be monitored very, very closely because that is our commitment to make sure that we have these continued qualities that we all appreciate at the Wellness Center. We have an interlocal agreement and we believe that by entering into the interlocal agreement with the Sheriff's Office, that we can better serve our employees. And the main goal, the main benefit here for our employees would be able, is that we would be able to provide a second location. So that is the huge advantage here. It would be in Inverness. A location has been identified, it's a possible location. It is on South Apopka. On South Apopka, you know, there's three little strips, strip plazas that have like just two or three fronts to them. It's the newest of the three, the one that is closest to the Highlands. So it is a good facility. They've had an opportunity to see the facility, they believe it could work, and with the Sheriff's Office. And we'll get into more detail about that in a few minutes. But a location has been identified and it would be in Inverness. So that would be a big advantage, the second location. As far as responsibilities, and I did mention an interlocal agreement, let me back up a second. Mr. Tomlinson was able to draft a, an interlocal agreement for us. And it's been reviewed very closely with the Sheriff's Office and with our folks. And of course, Mr. Bradshaw was involved with the drafting of the interlocal and the final review of the interlocal. Citrus County School Board would maintain the Beverly Hills location and the Sheriff's Office would be responsible for the Inverness location. And to get a little bit more specific about that, they would be responsible for all of the setup fees at the Inverness location and the maintenance of that, any repairs, the utility bill, anything to do with the Inverness location, they would be responsible for. And again, that would include all of the initial setup costs for that facility. We would continue to pay for the facility that we have in Beverly Hills. So we would have no additional cost for this second facility. Each entity would be responsible for the repair, replacement, and the updating of the facility, the fixtures, and the equipment of their respective facilities. And these things are all outlined in the interlocal agreement. Even things such as keeping up with the paper towels and the soap in their facility. And then we would do our facility. Again, the two locations, we have ours that is existing in Beverly Hills, the new facility would be in Inverness. Employees of the School Board and the Sheriff's Office would all have access to both locations. And one thought of how we would come about this is some numbers specifically would be, we have 120 hours currently of provider hours that we're offering in Beverly Hills. We would be shifting 20 of those hours to the Inverness location. So again, no additional expense for us, we're shifting some hours to the Inverness location. The Sheriff's Office, their initial agreement is to start up with 20 provider hours in the Inverness location. Therefore, we'd have 40 provider hours in the Inverness office. Most of those would be physician hours, but it would be augmented by some mid-level personnel as well, nurses, those types of things. So that's how we would start with the hours and providing the services. As far as the billing of services, there would be separate billings of services such as the prescriptions and the lab fees. So those are going to be tracked when they come into either location. We will track who the employee is, which agency they're with, and it will be separate billing for the prescription and the lab fees. It will be a pro rata share of the administrative fees and the medical supplies. So that's going to be based on perhaps, and we don't have an exact number yet, but there's approximately 600 eligible employees with the Sheriff's Office and approximately 2,100 eligible employees with the school district. So approximately, you know, and these were very rough numbers when we discussed, get discussed it, we're going to have to obviously get more specific with that, but approximately a 70/30 split. And that's how we will cover the administrative fees and the medical supplies. And again, these things are outlined in the interlocal agreement. The Sheriff's Office will pay us for the use of the x-rays. We purchased an x-ray machine, it's at the Beverly Hills location, so we will come to an agreement. And again, we have to fine tune those exact numbers. But there will be the overread fee, which will be either $12 or $18 per patient. If there's maybe three films taken on a particular person, it's still a 12 or an $18 fee. And then also the operation of the machine. And these are things we will need to work out and get an exact dollar figured on, but they will pay us for those. This is very brief information. We do have more details. I can go over some of the highlights of the interlocal if you'd like. You all have had that copy, you've had an opportunity to read through it. But specifically pointing to number four on the interlocal, did you have a copy of the interlocal agreement? Is that the question?
We're going to bring that to them on July 8th for approval.
Okay, all right. I can share with you some of the things that are in the interlocal. As far as the School Board and the Sheriff agree to pay their respective sharing of costs for the medical services, and the Sheriff will be responsible for all of the setup fees. These are things I've already mentioned in the PowerPoint that are specifically outlined here. The, we will each pay our respective administrative program fees to Care Here and to Crown, and then the pro rata that's based on the percentage of utilization for each facility for the medical supplies. These are things such as the Band-Aids, the syringes, the tape, the gauze, those types of things. And then again, the lab costs and the prescriptions will be based on the patient usage. So, do we have any questions regarding this possible partnership?
Board members?
Will the district be responsible for the month-to-month accounting processes as far as oversight?
They're going to keep separate billing for us. There is going to be, they're going to monitor this, we're going to monitor it very, very closely to make sure of the equity. And they're going to be monitoring it on a weekly basis. We're also going to be meeting quarterly. The interlocal states that there will be a quarter settle-up. So each quarter, we're going to look at it and make sure, the way that we're doing this, the 20 hours and the 20 hours by them, 20 hours by us, make sure it's fair and equitable. If we decide 70/30, is that actually what's happening? Is that fair and equitable, or do we need to adjust that?
Thank you.
Let me talk about no-shows. Do you like to address that?
No-shows are always an issue. It kind of fluctuates, you know, some months they're higher, some sometimes they're lower. We had seen a pattern where they were higher, we talked about some strategies that we might try to implement. We have always avoided a fee for a no-show. Usually, we use strategies such as putting something out in an email, putting something in the newsletter. And then we see it improve for a month or two. So we do strategies without having to actually bill for it. Can't say we would never get to a point where maybe everyone together would make a decision that we needed to bill for those, but we've not had to do that at this point in time.
Do the other health clinics, wellness centers bill for that?
We do.
What's the approximate fee for that, for the no-show?
Sorry, I didn't say that.
That's okay, thanks.
That was the answer from here.
That's fine for the moment.
They use different methods. We've had some that charge $20 a month if you're going to be late, if you've missed so many within a certain period of time. Then there will be a $20 charge per month for a period of time. There are others that have done different things where they've had some cost factors added. But it's really customized what the client wants to do. With good education and information and just making them aware that they're taking, by them not canceling before, they can cancel up to three minutes or two minutes before the appointment, and it clears up, that's not a no-show. But it takes away from others who want that appointment. So we're trying to make them aware. We've had pretty good cooperation, there's been a pretty good response so far, without having to charge them anything.
Thank you.
They had opportunity to do joint ventures in other areas as well with great success. They're working very closely with the Sheriff's Office. And so I don't know if you want to hear about any other areas that have had success in this venture.
The size between the two prospective offices from the one that we have in Beverly Hills and then the one that would be in Inverness, and I'm trying again to think of equitable between, you know, our office is twice the size and we handle twice the patient load than an Inverness office, you know, we're again, trying to just balance some equitability between those. So maybe you could address, you know, the difference in size or the similarities. If you, yeah, that if you would allow, thank you, sir.
That's a great question. You're astute to be able to observe the difference in the size of the population between the two organizations. This is a starting point, this 20 hours and 20 hours. It gives the Sheriff's Office an opportunity to open their own facility, sharing it with the school district. And we thought we'd start at 20 hours each. That's going to depend on utilization. We've, I mean, I'm more practically based and logic-driven, so you've got a lot of folks that work out of this facility that are school district employees. So what we have to watch is that it doesn't get overrun by one or the other. And that's why with the weekly utilization reports that we have, we'll be able to monitor this on a weekly basis. And after two or three weeks, we'll take a look, we'll meet on a monthly basis. But we have the ability, and the Sheriff's Office understands that they're going to have to increase their hours as the utilization grows. So we want to watch that there's not something unwieldy or inequitable in terms of numbers of folks going to either location. We have about seven other health centers in the state that share facilities. In fact, we have two other Sheriff's Offices sharing facilities in Charlotte County, and we're also doing it at Lake County. So we already have experience with that, and this is how we've started each one of them. And then we just make those changes as they're necessitated so that we can keep activity.
The size between the two offices right now, the proposed office physically size as well?
Well, the size difference is probably equitable in terms of the population size. We believe that, starting with 40 hours at this one location on South Apopka is going to be fine. We can double that in terms of size, in terms of staff size. So we can actually double that, have two full-time staffs going at the same time if we need to. So when we looked at the facility, we looked at it, not what can it provide right now for the immediate future, but what can it provide a year from now? And so I think if I had any concern is that if we get beyond 80 hours, and that'll probably take a year or two, then we probably need to look at another facility, maybe another remote facility or a larger facility to accommodate more.
And that was going to be my next question is, you know, a next obvious would be a conversation with the Board of County Commissioners. They'd like to open up a Crystal River, you know, office type thing and that, you know, because I think it's just a logical, as this is happening, to then, you know, see if there's that opportunity, not necessarily today, but that, that that happens. And again, as long as it's equitable to us and services, you know, we have, we have, you know, 2,400 employees. About how many do we have within our insurance though? Because between parents and...
I think it's about 2,100 employees own the insurance plan. And that would probably include the retirees that are covered under your insurance plan.
And then families and plus ones.
Yeah, you're probably looking at, I'm going to say, 3,200 lives in that range.
That's what I was thinking, it was in that.
Is it possible that when we open up this joint facility and be that the School Board employees know that they've got to schedule early to get an appointment, so they book every appointment? And the Sheriff's Department, then are they forced to go to La Canta? I know that's a...
Yeah, that's a hypothetical situation that could occur, and that's what we want to prevent. We need to look at what do we need to do equitably to make sure that both organizations have equitable access. And so we're going to monitor that real closely. We can track every day we need to, we can track who goes where, which entity is represented at each location. So we'll be looking at that. We aggregate those reports on a monthly basis, we get those reports weekly, but we can actually track daily. So we'll watch it, we're going to be, we have two incredible directors here. And so they're going to be watching that and making sure that we are doing what's best for both. The way this is a win-win is for the community to win. We've got a good number of employees now that would be based from this community going to two health centers, and that's going to be a help to everyone. So maybe the county someday would want to get involved. So that would maybe open up other facilities like Crystal River or as far south as Home Assassin.
Right.
And there could be Sheriff's Office folks who prefer the Beverly Hills location, you know, that live in Crystal River, that live in Beverly Hills area. Physical location is smaller in Inverness.
That's what I kind of thought.
From a workload standpoint, just so you're aware, you've got Sheriff's Office people all over the county, and they have a little more mobility, those that are the law enforcement side. And so they can go, there're going to be quite a few that'll be able to access at La Canta or Beverly Hills location during the day. So it won't be all coming to Inverness. The more administrative from both organizations will have closer access to the Inverness.
Ms. Bell, for...
I was just curious about the staffing strategies. Do you market opportunities to the local community, or are you staffing from out of state, out of county, out of...
Well, here's the, the one thing that's really neat is the current staff we have at Beverly Hills will be able to pull 20 hours of their staffing. And we've already located, I think, staffing for the Sheriff's Office if we need to. We can't officially offer anything until we have a contract with the Sheriff's Office, and that should be this week. But we already have some folks identified locally here. So we're looking, that's what we prefer to do, is recruit locally. It just makes it better for everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bell?
In stocking the prescription area, let me...
Microphone.
In stocking prescriptions, will it be the same stocking, or would you see who's coming in, what's needed in the stock?
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question. It will, it will look similar initially. We've looked at the utilization of the Sheriff's Office, we have their claims information. So we've looked at what they've been utilizing, and so we'll augment with what we're doing. I would say 90%, that's about the same for both organizations. There'll be some uniquenesses with the Sheriff's Office personnel, so we'll stock some of those meds. The beauty is, we're not limited on how many meds we can stock. So we'll make sure we have plenty of everything available. And that always, that formulary keeps getting adjusted based on need. And I think everyone knows now that Nexium, as an example, is over the counter now. So we always get questions about Nexium, but now that it's got an over-the-counter equivalent, that's going to be something we'll be, I'm sure we'll be stocking that too. Anything else, board members?
Thank you.
Ms. Hammel, are you needing the, for us to give you some direction then on how to proceed?
If you all are, if you all would like for us to proceed, I can have Ms. Sarnich give you the interlocal agreement, and we'll put that on you, Jennifer, July 8th for approval.
Right, thank you.
Board members?
It sounds good.
I'm good with that as well. Okay, flood insurance. Thank you, by the way, very much. And thank you for servicing our staff and...
A pleasure.
I can tell you, having, I had a young daughter myself, that we needed to get in, within about 20 minutes, we could get online, book that appointment, and we all were seeing her, so we appreciate that. Flood insurance.
Thank you.
And Ms. Ternix, thank you. I know we pushed you back last meeting, I believe, on flood insurance.
We're working on that for you.
And...
It's not a problem, we switch gears here.
Something we hope we don't have to use. And I see from some of the information you've sent us, looks like we've got some rate changing.
Potentially.
Potentially.
However, some even last-minute updates as of yesterday from legislative updates, so that might be a little bit better news on the horizon, but we're not sure yet. So yes, flood insurance, past, present, and future. Our current situation is that we have been able to enjoy the fact that our rates are subsidized by government monies. There are four different entities that kind of feed into flood insurance and what our rates are. FEMA is one of those that we're all pretty familiar with, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And FEMA flood insurance determines areas of possible coverage through the use of flood plane, flood plane maps and flood insurance rate maps. There's also the National Flood Insurance Program. This is a federal program that is managed by FEMA, and it provides flood insurance, it improves flood plane management, and it develops maps of flood hazard zones. There's also the Biggar Waters Act of 2012, and that is the situation that has caused the potential for our rates to go up 25% per year over a five-year period, which would be great increases, obviously. And according to our broker in conversation with him, that this was clearly not a well-fought-out process, and there's been much discussion, and they have repealed parts of this. But the problem that we have right now is we can't anticipate and we don't know 100% for sure which parts of this have actually been repealed. The Stafford Act is the act that gives us disaster relief and emergency assistance when we need this. And what this also says is if you don't cover, if you don't carry flood insurance, then you're not going to get the government assistance that you could get if you did have flood insurance. So it doesn't allow you to just not do, not have flood insurance because you know you're going to get this federal assistance. It limits the federal assistance you're going to get if you choose to not have flood insurance. So it kind of locks us into needing to have the flood insurance. Currently, the school zones that we have that we have flood insurance on would be these schools that are listed, and there's several buildings on each of those campuses. And each building has to have insurance. It's not one insurance policy, it's the several policies. I believe there's approximately 10 at Crystal River High. And each building has to have the insurance on it. Each building has its own deductible for the building itself, and then another deductible for the contents. So if both the building and the contents are wiped out, then you have twice the deductible that we have to meet. So these are the rates that we've been paying. This is the rates that we paid in the 1213 year, the 1314 year. And then this is the worst-case scenario. If we were to project out for the next five years, a 25% increase each year, this is what we would potentially be looking at. And that's why we felt it was important to bring it to your attention. However, the, again, the new good information from yesterday is that they believe that the parts that were repealed are going to protect us from the majority of this increase. But we don't know that for sure. They can't, they couldn't tell, they cannot tell us yes or no, that we will have these increases or not. So again, the unknowns that we have is what is our full flood risk? Because remember, we've been paying just the subsidized rate, so we don't know what the full rate would actually be. We are anticipating what it could be. And then also another unknown is, are we going to have other insurance company that might join the flood insurance market and offer some better rates to us? The known facts that we have are that since the NFIP has tracked flood claims, we have never had a loss or a filed claim for our school district. This was even during the no-name storm. So we've never had to use our flood insurance. Should we choose to self-insure, we would be subject to the Stafford Act, and we would lose the option to subsidize the increases over the five-year period of time. So if we were to make a decision to self-insure and to not do the insurance, then we would, we would lose the option of being, if we ever should change our mind and want to go back to having the insurance, we'd be going full freight. We would not have the five-year increment of the increase. And also the fact that Florida Legislature is currently working on ways to assist. And that's what we recently had found out, is that yes, there have been some remedies, and there have, has been some repealing of this Biggar Waters Act. It's just not real certain how that will affect us yet. So the options we have is we could choose to self-insure, we could readdress this in one year, so we'll see what kind of assistance is happening and how this is affecting us. Or we could consider increasing the deductibles to offset the premiums. Looking at increasing deductibles was not a great option because, again, there's a deductible per building for the building and the contents. So when you add it all up, it becomes a very, very large deductible. Our recommendation at this point in time would be to just monitor it, to watch and see, especially with this bit of information, with the fact that it's just been repealed, high likelihood that we're not going to see these increases. We can always change our mind at any point in time and decide to increase our deductibles if needed, to lower the premium, although they couldn't tell us what our... So if we were to make a decision to self-insure and to not do the insurance, then we would, we would lose the option of being, if we ever should change our mind and want to go back to having the insurance, we'd be going full freight. We would not have the five-year increment of the increase. And also the fact that Florida Legislature is currently working on ways to assist. And that's what we recently had found out, is that yes, there have been some remedies, and there have, has been some repealing of this Biggar Waters Act. It's just not real certain how that will affect us yet. So the options we have is we could choose to self-insure. We could readdress this in one year, so we'll see what kind of assistance is happening and how this is affecting us. Or we could consider increasing the deductibles to offset the premiums. Looking at increasing deductibles was not a great option, because again, there's a deductible per building for the building and the contents. So when you add it all up, it becomes a very, very large deductible. Our recommendation at this point in time would be to just monitor it, to watch and see, especially with this bit of information, with the fact that it's just been repealed, high likelihood that we're not going to see these increases. We can always change our mind at any point in time and decide to increase our deductibles if needed, to lower the premium. Although they couldn't tell us what our new premium would be yet if we hired, if we raised our deductibles. But again, our recommendation at this time is just to monitor it and see where we are a year from now in the situation.
That 25% is that potential? The increments that you showed us?
Yes. It's the, it's the paint, the bill we have last year adding 25% to that for one year, 25 more to that the next year, yes.
Is the projected 1415 still in question? Or is that particular one now look like that is going to be the rate?
We've not gotten all of those. Most of those come due in September. So if we had those to look at, we have a better view of where we're at. But we have two that have come due that are current. One came due a couple of months ago, and it was 25% higher. But the one that has just recently come to us in the last few weeks is right about the same, it's only about 6% higher. So when I asked that question and said, well, why would one be 25% higher and the other not, they believe we were billed for that one before this got repealed. And that they're going to continue to see more like a 6% increase. But again, they're kind of guessing. That's why we're trying to share with you the worst-case scenario.
Is the premium that we, that was paid prior to the repealing, is there any rebate that we'll get off of that?
Possibly, yes. That's a potential.
What's the 25% base value? Is it 25% with...
They're just saying our total im... Yes. They're just saying the total impact could be up to 25% per year for five years. I'm not sure what they would have based that on.
And that would be like 125% increase in five years?
And we have never filed a claim.
Correct. That's why there's that thought out there, do we self-insure? But, it's a risk.
Well, you can, we think with increase, the property value was increasing like that, but that's not true. So I don't get where they get the 25%.
Looking at, without looking at the schools, which become a little bit more unique, but thinking of the Marine Science Station, Crystal River Transportation, for example, are those as much assets, the cost of the insurance, or are they more of the personal properties and equipment? Because I'm thinking, I can't believe the buildings are as significantly valued as maybe the contents within them.
Sure, you should have the assets there, but majority of those are, you know, when we did Home Assassin, they tried to rebuild some buildings above the flood plant, some are not. But, and then like the high schools, some are, some are not, ten primary schools. So a lot of those is the buildings and the contents combined to look at what the cost of the insurance is.
So for example, Marine Science Station, you've got the lab in the classroom building, 400. You've got the museum in the art building. So the lab and classroom building, the building coverage is 162,000, the contents is 21,000. So each, each one is specified like that.
Okay.
So the thought is, you know, we've never filed claims, even during the no-name storm, do you just self-insure? Do you just do away with purchasing the flood insurance? On the other side is, you know, if you don't have the flood insurance, and you may not be able, eligible, I think, for the FEMA relief, as in the Stafford Act, I believe it said. Or if you ever want to get back in it, then you pay the full freight, you know, as opposed to the government subsidized rate that we've been paying. And that's, and you've seen this in the news. I mean, homeowners, I mean, the sale of real estate on water, just, you know, people haven't been able to sell it because they're afraid to purchase because the cost of the flood insurance can be worth more than the home at some point in time. So it's just a, it's a, it's a, it's information that we wanted to share with you because it is relevant, because we have, you know, a few facilities that have to have flood insurance or are going to purchase it, but we've never used it. You know, I was surprised to learn that even during the no-name storm, we never used it, because I thought we'd have had some floods, but we didn't.
We've had some floods, but we handled ourselves.
Yeah, so...
Looking at disaster relief, if the governor were to define an area as a disaster, would the fact that we haven't paid into that, the insurance, would that would be automatically be eliminated? I mean, in the diap...
That's where FEMA comes in. When they declare disaster, that's where FEMA comes in, that's who helps out. And we have filed claims with FEMA in the past, and we haven't had any issues. We actually just closed one out from seven, eight years ago, just recently, so...
It would be no elimination as far as potential offset of cost if we did self-insure?
Well, no, I think we would, we would not be eligible for the FEMA.
We definitely would not be eligible for any federal or state funds of support at all, no matter how vast the devastation is. They wouldn't say Citrus County, Marion County. Okay, so bottom line is that statute eliminates any opportunity for reach. Thanks.
Did you need direction at this time? Do we want to hold tight for another year, board members? Or do we want to explore more of the self-insuring?
Not knowing the increase is definite, you're saying it's not a definite increase.
No, I didn't know if anyone was just to just hold off at this point or not. I'm sorry. It's a vote. Okay. Then, then there's no direction. Okay. I guess then we're looking for no direction.
Thank you, sir.
Again, the question is, as in, board members, if we want to bring this back, then we'd need to, to have further discussion on, we'd need to bring it back as agenda item.
All right.
And I believe we are on to Mr. Dixon. Thank you, Sheriff.
One of the board members?
My name is Murray.
We have three items today on the policy review. And I, well, two of them are kind of related, so I'll begin with the second one, 6.27, reported misconduct. This is a workshop, so, and this will relate back to information inspection and copying public records. This is a request to review the revision of policy 6.27, reported misconduct. This revises Section 2B based on a revision to one, Florida statute 119071. And adds a citation, 119071. 119071 are the exceptions to inspections and copying public records. Spanner was discussed by the Policy Amendments Committee on February 20th. And if you'll look at page one of three, you can see there, this basically says in Section 2B that information related to the alleged misconduct shall be considered confidential and shall not be released except as required by Florida statute. So basically, it goes right back to the Florida statute. There's nothing in there that specifies when it would or would not be released. What the statute basically says, I think upon reading it, is that the employee has to be notified at the conclusion of the investigation, regardless of whether there's disciplinary action or not, so notification has to take place.
101, 2.33, talking about employee discipline, Bob, says that you have to provide notification, and it does not become subject to public records until ten days after you do that.
After notification.
After notification. I don't know whether it's an exception to the public record statute or not.
So at this point, do you need action on this? It says request to review.
No, it's just a workshop. Unless you have questions.
No, I don't have any questions.
Anything else?
So I'll refer back to the other one, which is number one, policy 3.50, public information inspection of records. And this adds Section 2F based on revisions to that same statute. And this was also discussed on February 20th. If you'll look at page one of two, it says under 2F, a complaint of misconduct filed with the district against a district employee and information obtained in the investigation until the investigation is concluded and in accordance with policy 6.27, reported misconduct. So it refers back to the policy.
Thank you. And the comment, say, Mr. Dixon, shall be noted. Because we have people, something has been filed, and they're the ones who go in and start talking about it before anything's done. So if someone called and asks you if John Brown had a complaint, it would be...
It's not subject, correct. It's not subject to public record at that point.
Even though they say...
Complaint procedure, correct. Until it's concluded.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the, were there any other questions about either of those? Okay. And then the last policy under review is request to review the revision of policy 8.36, transporting students in private vehicles. This revision adds Section 4B related to following Florida statutes, including the ban on texting, which has been added to Florida statute 316.305. And it adds that citation, also reviewed on February 20th. So it's just basically adding the section to adhere to the Florida statutes regarding the ban on texting.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dixon, that follows suit with what is already in supposed statute as well as policy for our bus drivers.
Which we put in our policy.
Right.
I didn't know whether, Mr. Bradshaw, did you want to mention any of those other items that we discussed or await?
No, I mean, we'll bring this back and pick up the workshop. We'll bring this back, we'll bring back in July, the July workshop, probably, a discussion regarding distribution of church students and advertising policy ban and workshop on their public speaking, basically made comments at the board meeting. Go ahead and show that policy of the workshop is a treat, and this is a comment that they turned over to that, that'll update July, the July workshop.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Student progression plans. Elementary or secondary wants to go?
Just going to kind of preface it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, I didn't see you there.
Sorry.
I, you know, I could see them wanting to get put out of their venus misery in the bank there, so...
Well, good morning, members of the school board, Superintendent Mrs. Hemel and Mr. Bradshaw, school board attorney. This is a workshop to address the student progression plans. Just want to kind of preface some of the things that are similar in all three of the plans. We do, we are going to present our plans to you today in three facets, the elementary, the middle, and then the high school. Please remember that we did not come to you last year with a student progression plan for 2013, 2014. There was a lot of changes that dealt with Senate Bill 1076, which actually impacted the high schools, legislation, technical assistance, and so it basically delayed that process. But we are here today to share with you our student progression plans for all three levels. I wanted to remind the board to let them know that we have a process in educational services in which we actually communicate with the schools and our community with a lot of the changes that go on with legislation. We have curriculum TOSA and assistant principals meeting, meetings. They are held monthly, with the exception in the spring. But basically, they are facilitated either by, by Mr. Hebert, myself, and then Mrs. Nobles. The exceptional student education staffing specialists meet on a monthly basis with Nancy Hanes and her team from the district. Guidance counselors do meet quarterly with Mrs. Humble. There is an assistant principals meeting every month in which we communicate the information to the assistant principals, and Mr. Hebert and Mrs. Young actually facilitate that. We do have a monthly meeting with our principals that consists of two facets. One is a combined meeting in which general information, and then we do go into breakout sessions. And those breakout sessions get pretty specific in regards to a lot of the operations that go on in regards to curriculum and professional development, research and accountability, all those parts to the educational services. We also have Mr. Simon and Mr. Ross. Now, Amy Crowe will be working with the testing coordinators, and typically they get together two times a year. And then we have ESAL contacts at each of the schools, and they communicate with our TOSAs under the leadership of Mr. Hebert with Christina Touchton and Karen Jordan three times a year. So that basically gives you those district meetings that we have. At those meetings, we basically sit down, and the three of us will attend a July guidance counselors meeting in which we actually go over a lot of the changes in legislation. And we talk about that. We have visuals, some things that we'll be sharing with you today, so we do a start. And they're always excited to see us come into that meeting to be able to share updates to the progression.
I'm going to ask for the guidance counselors.
Four times? That's pretty much, you know, how it's been designated. I'm right, about four times a year, Mrs. Humble, for the guidance counselors?
Four, and they have a joint with everybody, elementary, middle, and high at the beginning of the year.
Well, I'm wondering if their changes have come about, sometimes it's come about in the interpretation, saying in the middle of the year...
Some do, yes. As a matter of fact, when they are pretty highlighted, what Mrs. Nobles and I will do is just like with this year, with a lot of the changes in regards to 18 credit graduation, we actually pulled the guidance counselors together and the assistant principals together at the high school level, and sat down and went over some of those changes at that time which would actually benefit to our students. So we went over that. And then I believe ESE was in on that as well, exceptional student education.
So if there's a major change on the...
Exactly. Yes, ma'am. There's another portion to our student progression, and that is our transition. Over the last probably nine years, we have actually had a transitional process in place in which we have a matrix of transition. We have elementary fifth grade teachers, we'll have a spreadsheet of every student in the district, and they actually have fields and columns in which we actually assist that feeding school with a proper placement for those students. So we have a matrix that's actually filled out by those eighth grade teachers for ninth graders, and then fifth graders to sixth graders. So again, it assists in that transition to help in proper placement of our students from fifth to sixth, and eighth to ninth. Again, that combined guidance meeting that Mrs. Allegra had spoke about, and then the exceptional student education staffing specialists actually meet one-on-one with their feeder schools in the springtime in preparation. I just wanted to kind of reiterate, legislation is not only impacting student promotion and the graduation of the new school year, it's now impacting students from previous years. So I come to you today with the understanding is that the governor just signed Senate Bill 850 just this past weekend. And so there are changes that we are actually still grappling with. There will be a wide variety of technical assistance, papers that are going to be coming out. But I was adamant about coming to you today with a document for all three levels that we can actually live with for this coming school year, with the understanding that as those changes take place that are significant, we will come back to the board with those addendums.
Mr. Clark, you're not saying that, you say, since the previous years, when something passes, so like we have to, algebra two now, those people in line to graduate, I expect algebra two?
No, not to that significance. But I can just give you an example with the middle schools, that they did not actually have the 30% calculation in the algebra for this coming, this year. But when that law's changed, it actually impacted the students that are currently in our schools. So that's what I'm saying, is that when they pass these laws, it actually applies to the students that are currently in our classes. And so we're going to go over that a little bit today. Again, a lot of challenges with changing our standards this year, and the little hiccup from Common Core actually to the Florida standards. And then again, the whole new assessments. And so you're going to see folks in the audience today, I've asked them to be here for resources and for expertise. And you had touched on it a little bit when Mr. Simon came to you asking approval for the Florida, for the calendar for the coming year. So I asked him to be on hand so that that way we can really talk about some of the assessments and how, what we know right now and how those will change. So again, new assessments are changing for 2005, or 2015, melded with the 2000, the FCAP 2.0 for the ARR, and then how the EOCs actually are going to be impacted, okay? So with that, I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Hebert. Mr. Hebert does oversee the whole student progression process. We come to you to workshop it. Then in July 8th, we will come to you for public advertisement, and they go through our process for student progression.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Good morning, Mr. Hebert.
Good morning. I know you all received the copy of the elementary section. I did want to share that, as Mr. Clark had stated, the governor did sign into law Friday, Senate Bill 850. And so I do have an addendum that I'm going to pass out and make some copies for you all and for the press relative to what he discussed on the front. So as you can see, relative to what the governor signed, there's three bullets there. One is adding language reflecting that a parent may request a school to immediately begin the collecting of evidence for the portfolio. Now, so you understand, we this year with portfolios for our third grade students made a decision to have all students work on a portfolio. So we've already been putting into place that practice prior to this happening. We want to be proactive to make sure that a portfolio was created. What we've done and operated under is because of the text that the students have to read, we didn't often start that portfolio until January because we felt the text at that point, kids had had to have that instruction. What this language is saying is in September, if a parent comes to the school and says, I want my child to have a portfolio, the school has to immediately start it that day. So we have to, even though the student hasn't had the instruction or maybe the text that they're having to read is going to be more difficult for them.
Mr. Hebert, what would that look like at that end September?
It would just, it'd be harder, harder, a little higher rigor for the student, and, and that's why we normally wait till January to do that. Now, so I can reference this portfolio piece, which is going to come later in the plan. The state has changed and told us that they're in the process of changing what will be included in the portfolio. In the past, because of next gen Sunshine State standards, we've had, here's the text from the Florida Center for Reading Research. They've given us all the documents of what we're supposed to be able to have. Well, now they said we're going to change what that is. So how many words are going to be on the page and all of that information? And we said, when will we know? And hopefully we'll know soon, is the word that I keep getting. So my hopes are by the time school starts, we'll have some technical assistance on what will be included in the portfolio. So as you'll see in the plan, as we go through that, we've had to kind of put some comments into the waiting information from the state to determine what will be included in the portfolio because we don't know what's required. Because I'm thinking what we currently have and what teachers have that we've provided for them, we've given them copies, notebooks of here's what you use for your portfolio, may not work for the upcoming school year. We're going to have to look at some other pieces.
Evaluation of what will work now, or will work.
Well, the, well, what currently happens now is the teacher grades it. So they're given, students given a passage to read and maybe five, five or 10 questions to answer. Teacher grades it, and then if the kid, you know, the student makes mastery of it, then that is a document they can use for.
Interpretation of the teacher, whether or not the mastery is achieved is not.
Well, it's a multiple choice, so, yeah, it's multiple choice. So it's not a, there's not a written response. Right, right, it's multiple choice.
And what would it be the advantage of starting it early or a parent wanting to request that? Because I'm trying to figure out why they would want to put that in statute.
Well, what I'm wondering is, and I'm thinking that there were students that if they did not pass, and again, I'm going to use FCAT because that's what we currently have. If the student did not pass the FCAT assessment, and the school did not do a portfolio, and the student went to summer school and maybe didn't pass the SAT ten, then the student's going to be retained. So I think this is to be proactive to say, at least give them the opportunity to go through the portfolio and, and see. And if they make, have that evidence, that portfolio, that could then good cause them to be promoted versus having to be retained. So I think that's what it is because some counties, I think, operated under the fact that not every student had to have a portfolio. And, and you didn't, you know, we didn't have to do it. We made, we put that into, I put that into place this year with our schools, this current school year. So all of our third grade students had portfolios, if they needed them to be good cause. Now, it doesn't mean that all the students did a portfolio, passed every test and were able to use the portfolio, but at least they were given the option to say, we're going to have you go through, through it and just have it in place, just in case. Because I felt like there are some kids maybe aren't good test takers, we know that, so the portfolio would help.
And I believe some of our principals were doing that in practice at the elementary schools.
But not every school.
But not every school.
It wasn't. Consistent, thank you. So we tried to put that into place. So again, I think that will help, and, and we're going to work towards hopefully trying to start that process sooner this year. So like I said, I think that part of the parent requesting, I think, will be fine. But that, I don't think it's going to be a huge impact, but I just want you to be aware of that. The second piece is provide students promoted to grade four with good cause intensive reading instruction and intervention that includes specially diagnosed information and strategies to meet the individual needs of each student. And we already do that. We're already doing that with our students. Any student that is good cause to the next grade level, we provide that for them. So we'll continue to do that. The last piece, and this, this is a, a critical change that the governor had signed, is that it talks about students who have received intensive reading intervention for two or more years and who were previously retained in grade K one or two or three for a total of two years. So that means child could be retained twice in, in third grade. Included with this addition, the language prohibits a student from being retained in grade three more than once. So a child could be in third grade. If they end up and they've had the intensive intervention, they're retained once in third grade, they cannot be retained again in third grade, so then they would be good cause to the next grade level. In the past, they could have been retained twice in third grade. So that's the, that's the big shift. Okay? The, the other piece on here, and this was a piece that Mrs. Humble can, can speak to if you need to, is we made some wording changes relative to our McKinney-Binto information, and it's replacing the word displaced, so taking that word off and using students or families in transition. And when they did the audit, that was a recommendation that the committee had recommended is taking the word displaced off and using the term students or families in transition. And that's for our McKinney-Binto students. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, it was, they recommended taking homeless.
Homeless.
And then we had changed it to displaced, and then when I got this report, it was for students in transition.
Questions on that?
It's first day of school, students.
August sixth. Teachers come back July thirty first.
I knew that. I had that one down. I'm just wondering how much time we have, Google.
Oh, we don't have a lot.
I'm feeling panicked.
We're working on it. If you, I know the document that you should have in front of you, there was, it says, Changes for Elementary School Student Progression Plan, and it lists the changes. I am not going to go through every change unless you prefer me to do that as a board. I was going to lift out some highlights of, of some changes I thought you might want to know about, but I was going to kind of share those changes with you. Page two of the student progression plan talks about more evidence of legal guardianship custody when appropriate to section A and add information about McKinney-Binto. And there's a whole section that Mrs. Humble put in talking about the McKinney-Binto Act. So, Ms. Humble, did you want to speak to that? Did you have any questions for her on what she added there?
I have, I have a general question. You know, with the situation we're having now at borders and people coming from South America or Middle America, citizens ask me, if the students arrive here for some reason, how, how will they enter the school system? I know, well, Olajan answered the question. If those students do come here, if they're placed here like they're placed by some governmental facility?
That's more of an immigration.
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking, enter a school, do they get a? Do you, do you have a special?
You know, like government, if they just show, bring kids to us, it would depend on what their requirements are and their mandates of the government.
So the government will tell us what to do if that occurs? In the past, the government.
Unless they're all adopted, yes. That they come with an adopted family, we'll do these things and.
Right. So it's sort of the same will apply with some statement about federal government, do you have a special way to handle this?
When students coming in, they're immigrants?
Well, they're crossing the border, the kids crossing.
She's referring to all those kids that have come across the border. What we do if they show up here, like it was, if that happened and the government gave mandates or something, we would have.
And we just follow the mandates. The question came from some citizens.
Well, y'all could do that.
Or ask.
I don't know that students can just show up in elementary world and.
They can, I know they have to do something, but maybe that would be clarified by.
I mean, generally, if they're beyond kindergarten age, any student that shows up, they're enrolled. You know, by law, we can't ask for, you know, immigration records or anything like that. And then it follows the regular procedure of the thirty days of, you know, the immunization, the physical, all of that, yes.
Follow the regular procedure.
Yes.
Thank you. The other piece I want to lift out is, and it starts on page five, which is adding Florida standards. As you know, in the document, because it was two years old, it discusses next generation Sunshine State standards. So we've changed that, and I've lifted that out in various sections where it talks about Florida standards.
We didn't have to change it twice.
Yeah, that's true, because we didn't bring it last year, so. The, the next piece is page eight, and this talks about the next generation Sunshine State access points. And that's been changed to access courses for students with significant cognitive disabilities. So that was more of a name change. Mrs. Haynes, I know, was in the audience, if you had any questions on that piece, which is the, just really a change of calling them access points to access courses. Any questions on that? Okay, then the next set of sections you can see, and again, it's pretty specific where it talks about FCAT two point oh. You know, we're doing the Florida standards assessment or the Florida statewide assessment. They, it's called FSA, but that basically, that umbrella for the Florida statewide assessment is all the assessments, and then the individual assessment is the Florida standards assessment in reading, mathematics, and writing. And that, again, was changed, we had to lift out all of those pieces related to FCAT two point oh to that. And, and if you have any questions on the assessment piece, I know Mrs. Crow and Mr. Simon are here on that piece. Now, I know the high school, there'll probably be more questions, but for the elementary level, if you have any specific questions on the assessment piece. The other piece that we had to change is on page nineteen, where it talks about change level one FCAT two point oh reading. And we changed that to did not meet proficiency levels on the Florida statewide assessment of reading. The reason for the change is because we don't know, they haven't told us, is it going to be proficiency levels? Is it going to be a score, percentage, percentile, we don't know. So we just left it as, we'll say, did not meet whatever proficiency is, and then we'll wait on that guidance from the Department of Education to say, here's what it is. But we know that we have to have some kind of, there's going to be some kind of proficiency level in there. Yes?
So just yesterday, we received a notice of what will happen in May is that the third grade reading and Algebra one score will be calculated, even though it's the new Florida standards assessment, it will be calculated like the FCAT two point oh test score. So we're going to, student, there'll be essentially two sets of scores. In May, there will be a score for reading to determine proficiency mastery. And there'll be a score for Algebra one, and there'll be other scores as well, designed like we have now. So in essence, a student will know if they got a level one, two, three, four, five. That score will then be recalculated in October to match the new calibrated levels and scale you have to be determined. So schools will be able to make decisions about promotion and graduation requirements in spring of two thousand fifteen.
And the recalculation, it will go up, you think, or it can go down?
Depends on how you choose to use that term. The research we're given is that typically with the new standards, that proficiency across the states have dropped between twenty and thirty percent. So for example, if you have a group of students where seventy percent are demonstrating proficiency in a particular school of third grade, potentially it can drop to forty or fifty percent if those students are proficient based on a more challenging set of tests and expectations.
The other piece on page nineteen is talking about the portfolio, and I think I referenced that earlier. We've lit, you know, put a piece in there that said, exact contents for the portfolio will be determined once requirements are released from the Florida Department of Education. So we know that there's going to be some specific requirements, we just don't know what those are yet. So we've kind of lifted that out. On page twenty-one, section seven, letter C, we added a piece that said, criteria listed for mid-year promotion may be subject to change. And again, this is again in reference to, we don't know what's going to be required for that portfolio piece. So we had to leave that in there.
Don't those people know we've got school?
Uh-huh, they do know. They can do.
They just got us the calendar.
We just got this. Some of this. Page twenty-three, and again, you may be aware of this, although we didn't bring it to the board last year because we didn't bring the progression plan, but we have the Excel information, which is pages twenty-two to twenty-four. And this is the opportunity for students to be accelerated in various classes. So if they're a third grader and, and a parent is requesting, or the school is requesting that they do fourth grade reading, fourth grade math, that we give them that opportunity to do that. And there's a whole process that we go through at our level. A problem solving team meets, they meet with the, the parent and the, look at the data and make that decision what's best for the kids. So this is just kind of meeting what the requirements are from statute on that Excel information. On page twenty-six, there's a whole section on virtual learning that we had to include, and Mr. Simon is here to speak on that if you have questions on the virtual learning piece. But that's pretty much all the information we have available for kids on virtual learning. Okay, page thirty. There were some changes here made, and I will tell you, the committee that we met was a committee represented this year of every elementary school, all different departments, guidance, ESE, TOSAs, principals, assistant principals, very large group, met parents, we had a parent in the group. Mr. Kennedy served on that, that committee as well. And one of the, the topics that came up was looking at our grading scale. I did check with the Department of Education, Helen Lancaster, and was informed that we, at the elementary level, have the option of adjusting our grading scales we see fit for the elementary school. So we can make that change if, if we determine that. So the committee met, and actually this, they had made this decision last year. It never came to the school board through the student progression plan. But we brought it up again, had conversation. We also did a presentation to all elementary schools. We gathered feedback from all elementary schools. Every staff received a formal presentation. Principals gathered the information, then we shared it with myself, and I then shared that with the student progression plan committee. The teachers' union also received the same presentation on the grading scale, and, and that information was shared with me. And then it was all collectively shared with the student progression plan committee to make a recommendation to you all. And the recommendation that they're making is to have the fifty, be the lowest F that a student would receive on their report card. So if you look at the grading scale, it'd be ninety to a hundred, which is the ten points, eighty, eighty-nine, seventy, seventy-nine, sixty to sixty-nine, and then fifty to fifty-nine would be what the recommended grading scale is for elementary.
For elementary only?
Elementary only. Honestly, many of, yes, we're looking for consistency, and honestly, many of our schools have already been putting that practice in place. They feel that, you know, the zero can dramatically impact a student's grade with getting one.
I do understand it. I definitely understand how the zero mathematically can just fracture the opportunity of success. My concern is, and this is getting into the weeds here as far as assessments philosophies. If a student does not turn in the work, do we have a tool of labeling that type of behavior that a teacher can use?
There, yes, on, on the, in Skyward, which is our grading program, the teacher can put a comment and, and list it as a, the student got a zero on the assignment because they didn't turn it in. So there's a place, so when a parent pulls that up and a parent says, okay, well, here's this assignment, they got a fifty percent. It shows a fifty, but they list in the comment and it says not turned in. Then the parent knows, okay, they got a fifty, that was the lowest, it's kind of our bottom score. was the lowest, it's kind of our bottom score, and in the presentation that we did to schools, we explained it in the fact of, it's no different than a 4.0 scale, you know, a kid can still get an F which is equal to zero quality points for turning nothing in, or getting a 42 percent on a test, it's still zero quality points, and that's what the 50 represents, it's just a different way of framing it.
Well, I definitely understand that, I definitely see the dynamics. I also see how even those elementary school kids, because I've had that smart kid come up and say to me, so right now my average is a 88 percent, if I don't do the project that's weighted 25 percent of my grade, and yet, I'll still be able to pull out a B, so I don't have to do that project. It all comes down to developing that work ethic, and I know that this is a real gray area of how we move forward, so.
But understand, our elementary schools also do what we do weighted, so they don't, like, everything isn't worth the same, so test grades are worth maybe 70 percent of a student's grade, and then maybe quizzes and homework, or most of our schools don't even grade homework anymore, that's not part of the grading system, but maybe a project's only worth 10 percent, so they already are doing a weighting, they're already coming up with a process to weight the grade, this is just saying, in order to make it equitable for the grades.
And Mr. Hebert, that was having a child that's just coming out of elementary, and two, one right before that, you know, we're busy doing homework at home every night, and then to see that homework is practice work, it's not graded work, and in fact, it's not participated graded work, and it doesn't go onto the grade as having any effect, so the challenge with that is, and I don't entirely disagree with that mentality, so I want to make that clear, because I think the Ruby Pain training, I think that that's taught us a lot about, really, homework is often says that you have a support system at home, and I'm trying to think of our other educator that meets with us regularly, Max Thompson, thank you, whoever said that in the audience, you know, will say too, that the homework has that, and so I think this goes into that same issue, because there are students that'll say, well, I did all my homework, but I don't get credit for any of that, and so now, I got a B, but if you counted my homework, I'd have gotten an A, they don't get that credit for that, so it's again that philosophy, but my concern is on those lower end students, and, you know, the state uses basically a five point system of zero through five, and when a student gets a one, we don't really deal with them, I don't think any differently than if they got a high one or a low one, or if they, or if we get a high A or a low B, so this is to me very similar to the way we're looking at, you know, assessments overall, and the differential between an A and a B, a B and a C, and a C and a D is 10 points, but on an F, it's, you know, it's 50 points, that differential is a problem, so I'm pleased that the committee has had that conversation, I know that schools have been having this conversation, because again, having a child that's gone through that, there has been thought to that, how it affects homework, how it affects the grading, and I, you know, I'm pleased because I'm one of those kids that I might be able to do five problems and get them right, but if you gave me 25, I struggled, and so I think that weighting plays a role in that, so I think we're going in the right direction.
And I will say, Mr. Bellford, that there was a lot of conversation on even what do we grade, and what does a grade represent, you know, I got a B in high school English, what does that mean, and does the B in high school English at Crystal River equal the same B at Citrus High School, because depending on who's teaching it, and depending on what they're, you know, teachers have a lot of latitude in deciding what assessment they use, you know, we give them that professional opportunity to make those decisions, so, but is it really the same, you know, I don't know, I mean, I would hope to think that if I was a student at Crystal River and I had a B, and then I transferred to Citrus and I was working, that I would still get a B, but I can't, I can't sit here and say, yes, I think that's the case, and same thing at elementary schools, I'm not sure, you know, we're just trying to level the playing field for the student, I mean, that's my ultimate goal, is to make sure students getting the fair advantage, but I do know that there was conversation of really probably, we need to kind of move towards looking at standards, and are we teaching the standards, and are we assessing students based on standards versus just a grade, because really, what is a grade?
Well, the goal is for the students to develop skill mastery, and using a valid assessment tool in order to drive that skill mastery, and to measure that skill mastery is critical. I definitely understand the math, I get that 10-point spread, I definitely do, I also understand students even at the elementary level, who they'll work those numbers, and they'll determine how much they will work in order to get the grade that they want to achieve, so it all goes back to, if it's worth testing, it's worth mastering, so qualifying what goes on a test, and I definitely appreciate the move, and I definitely appreciate the fact that we're striving for continuity, consistency, and balance with assessment practices, and I think we're still embarking.
And we have a long way to go.
Yeah, we're still climbing that hill.
I mean, I'll tell you, nationally, I know, in talking with other counties, they are looking at a, you know, more of a standards approach, so we're not there yet, and many districts aren't, but they're, that conversation is there, so I think we'll be seeing that in the fourth round.
There are several districts that practice the same grading scale at the high school level, but they can't put it in their progression plan because the state mandates our grading scale for secondary, but the conversation also comes when you give a student a zero, as a teacher, did you allow that student to have five assessments through that grading period, or one, and then we find out that students have a hard time getting called, we know that discussion's out there, if you don't turn something in, why am I giving you a 50 instead of a zero, we know that, but we're trying to look at what's best for the kids, and then with also our teachers, so there's lots and lots of conversations going on about this.
And I think the ultimate goal is for the student to do the work, I mean, the goal isn't just to say, well, okay, if I don't do it, then I'm still going to get a good grade, well, no, the goal is you do the work, so I think, I know at the elementary level, the teachers are expecting students to say, we need you to produce something, and they're working with them to do that, I know high school might be a little more difficult to say, I need you to do it, because they may just refuse.
Well, again, it's high school level, it's back to that skill mastery, my focus and many teachers, it's a redo, I'm sorry, that's unacceptable, let me talk to you about the areas that are strong, areas of improvement, and let the kid discover where they can improve based on examples, and then they go back and do it again.
And that's really the move, if you think about standards-based reporting, that's what we should be working on, okay, they mastered this standard, we know they've mastered it, and not looking at what a grade means, it just means they mastered this.
Focus on skill mastery.
Yeah, I agree.
But the challenge has been especially at ELA, is that we've changed the weighting of what those standards are, and we have put different emphasizing on what was important under FCAT 2.0, and now what will be under AIR, we don't know how AIR is, and I can tell you, having a wife that's going into that right now, that says, I'm not sure which standards to teach, I'm not sure what mastery to be doing, because we don't know what is important. The state didn't give us this year to say, from the FCAT 2.0, which was the last FCAT, you'd think that they could break it out and say, listen, your mastery of students were in these areas, so we don't even know what we succeeded on and what we didn't, and that's going to be a challenge for a number of years, and Patrick Simon's shaking his head, because this is a real challenge, this is a challenge that our teachers are having to say, what standards and mastery do we teach, because at this point, there's this emphasis, we throw everything against the wall, we don't have time to throw it all against the wall, and we have made it punitive against our students and teachers.
It's very frustrating.
Very.
What probably in one state?
Yeah, what state was that, that we're copying? Utah.
The other piece connected with the page 30, which is on report cards, was interim progress reports, and the term interim progress reports, and you may understand it as being a midterm, but we're going to be calling it now the interim progress reports, as we've moved to Skyward, Skyward generates electronically to families, a, what we call an interim progress report and a midterm, and a midterm is pretty much, you know, at the midpoint in the nine weeks, it kind of gives a parent a, how's the child doing, how are they doing, and what's going on with the child. Many families have access to Skyward and have the email capability where it'll automatically send, so as we moved towards more of a digital platform, we wanted to make that more available to parents, so what we've done is we've added in here that an interim progress report made available electronically to all students in grades one through five, and I'll address why kindergarten is not listed in a moment, and then a printed copy will be made available upon request, and what we're saying is, if a family says, I don't have access to Skyward, you know, I don't have an email account, I can't get to the computer, can you send it home, so they'll go, Mrs. Bryant's the teacher, Ms. Bryant, can you send that home once a month to me, and then the parent will then, the teacher will then send that home, hand, you know, make a hard copy, and give it to the parent to come home, and for the other students, it may only be one or two students, and every other student, mom and dad will get it on their phone, they can click it open, and see exactly how that student is doing, and I will tell you, as a parent of a high school student getting that was wonderful, because when they hit high school, the papers don't come home anymore, I don't see what's in the book bag, and actually, I don't want to look in the book bag.
I see Ms. Kraut saying the same thing back there, because she's got one too.
So that was a recommendation that we made as well, now for kindergarten, because right now, with the way Skyward has set up kindergarten, and we're working with information services to make this available on Skyward, but kindergarten report card and midterm is not easily done on Skyward, so our midterm is, the teachers do that, and the paper copy will go home, so all of our kindergarten students will get a hard copy, but as we move towards more of a digital platform for kindergarten, then the hopes are that we'll move that way as well with them, but at this point, we're leaving it the way that is. And the last piece was page 32, there were two appendices listed that we've removed, end of year proficiency expectations and progress monitoring tools, and the purpose of that was, I will tell you, they were outdated, the information in there was information and tools that we no longer have, we no longer use, and so when we looked at what we look at for proficiency, all of our schools look at grades, they look at the scores, we look at the whole child, when we make a decision for either promoting or retaining a student at the elementary level, we don't look at one piece of data, we look at everything, so this gives schools that opportunity to say, if I'm going to make a decision, I'm going to look at all data, the problem solving team's going to get together and make that recommendation, obviously with parent involved to make that decision. So those are all the big changes, I don't know if you've had a chance to review, and if you have something else you want me to lift out, again, I have some other folks in the audience that can come up and speak to specific pieces in here if you would like that. Okay, thank you, and I think we're going to move on, Mr. Clotter.
Mr. Hebert, I just want to thank you, having sat on that committee now for three years, I appreciate so much, this year was really having to do a lot of cleanup and a lot of addressing, I want to thank that committee too, because, you know, on page, on page 23, section two, and you don't have to turn to it, but it's on the acceleration Excel model, our district before 7059 became law, was already doing that, we had already put it into practice, and then we had put it into the progression plan, as a child of two acceleration students, I thank you because they have had those advantages because of that, so the state decided that, you know, it wasn't just good for Citrus County, so, and Mr. Clotter, you would have been so pleased with Mr. Hebert, he controlled a very passionate room with wonderful educators, so, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to hand out a document to you. Middle school student progression plan, actually, did meet the document that I just handed to you, where the participants that worked with this year on the student progression plan, as you can see, representation, and we thank Mrs. Powers for being on our committee for our meetings, and at the bottom you can see, we've really actually gotten to the point where we have two meetings, and I think everybody does it kind of the same way, when we come together, we basically look at the student progression plan, concerns that schools have, and we sit down and we actually review those, we generate a document of some things that we want to address, and then we go through legislation. One of the key things that I was talking to Mrs. Nobles about is that when we, as a district, attended our FOIL, which is the Florida Organization Instructional Leaders Meeting in November, Mary Jane Tappin did a great job of preempting a lot of legislation that was going to be coming out, so as we sat there, we basically had some of those conversations when we met with our team, so that document gives you an idea of our committee, and then the dates that we actually met, and again, that one meeting is actually held after the FOIL spring meeting, so that way we can get some information. Again, I don't want to be redundant in this, but as you can see, the document that you have with you on the changes for the middle school plan is going to be somewhat indicative of some of the changes that Scott has already addressed, so again, lifting out things, and just for the board's background, the biggest point, the turning point with the middle school was in 2006, because that was the point at which the legislation mandated the requirement that students have to pass three successful courses for math, English, science, and social studies, that was the big part, and it was no longer, we could just promote a child to the high school because of their performance in FCAT, they basically had to pass those, and again, the education, so I'm going to kind of go through this with you again, like Scott, lifting out some of those highlights, I do have the specific page numbers and the identification there, page two, in the McKinney Vento, Mrs. Hamba had actually gone through that, and some of the changes that we're looking at making there, page three, and then therefore is basically the state standardized assessment, and then I've changed it through, we've changed that throughout the entire document. On page four, this is the, where we actually start to clean up some things with the high school, because when we talk about students at the middle school level taking courses, it's basically saying, and higher, so a student could actually be sitting in class in language, English one, as an eighth grader, because it would still then constitute Ford High School, I'm sorry, middle school requirements, so, I'm going to actually start on page four, when we start to talk about the schools composed of, and I believe, board members, I have given you this document right here, does this look familiar to you, if you do not have it, I have copies here that I can share with you, please let me know. With a lot of the changes, things that actually go on, this is a document that we actually provide to the guidance counselors, and to the curriculum specialists, to the assistant principals, to the administrators, so that way they can see it in a nutshell as to what those requirements are, but the biggest, the big change that I have listed is that I've actually taken out a lot of the high school specific language, and I put that back in a section that is more conducive, that we talked about more conducive. On number three, on page four, letter B, number three, page four, letter B, number three, this is the big change that took place within the last two years, and that is the requirement for the civics education. The only thing that happened in the two years is that they basically said that civics will be required for students, it first came out that it would be entered into either grades seventh or eighth, and then last, the legislation basically said sixth, seventh, and eighth. We basically teach our course in the seventh grade, it actually took the place of a world geography course at the secondary, at the middle school level. As you know, ladies and gentlemen, the initial year for an end-to-course exam that is administered, it's 30 percent of the calculation, that was actually this year's cohort, our seventh graders that went through the middle school actually had the civics class for the first time, well, actually, this was the group that went, but this was the group that was going to be actually taking the end-to-course exam, we actually aligned it to an instructional material that we bought for this year, and worked with the schools, had an instructional map, a timeline for the civics, so we implemented it in the grades. So we implemented it in the grade seven. The biggest change that came about this legislation was that it would basically, or the last legislation, is that that end-to-course exam would be 30%, just like all the other end-to-course exams, it would be calculated as 30%. So this was pretty significant. Again, first end-to-course exam at the middle school level for those general courses for students, and then it would be counted as 30% of the grade. Now, one of the things that we're always challenged by is, what if a child enters into our school and transfers from out-of-state private school? What do we do with that requirement for the civics? And there is addressed on number three, halfway down, a middle school student who transfers into the public school system from out-of-country state private school. And again, what I tried to do is, again, copies straight from legislation, but if a student comes in as an eighth grader in January, and they basically have in their transcript those courses for social studies, the three, they would not need to pass that, they wouldn't need to take the civics, they wouldn't need to pass, take the end-to-course exam. So basically, it addresses those students that actually come in after the grade level of which we're actually delivering it. Now, if a student comes in at the beginning of the year as an eighth grader, don't have civics on their transcript, guess what? We're putting them right into the eighth grade, seventh grade civic class. So that is a big portion of the requirement for the middle school. Everything is pretty much the same. The Career and Educational Planning Course that takes place at the middle school level is still required for students, and that typically is no longer a standalone course in Citrus County with so many challenges that we have. It is actually embedded into either a social studies or one of the other courses. But I will just tell you, the educational planning, EPCAP plan is still being done, and it's actually being done in the social studies courses. Page number seven, don't know if Mr. Hebert alluded to this, but RTI is basically an older acronym. It's now the multi-tiered system of support, so we've actually made that change as well in our student progression plan.
So we're no longer saying RTI.
Yes, correct.
Let's just get next to it.
Okay.
So we're going to do MTSS now.
Correct.
All right.
We did actually make some changes to our ESOL and just kind of cleaned it up a little bit. I think one of the things that it addressed was the older assessments, and it actually addresses the statewide assessments. Page number 10, we did actually talk about the excess courses for students with significant disabilities. As Mrs. Powers knows, we had Mr. Amundson and Mrs. Haynes in our committee, and we basically worked on that language. We actually cited some parent resources that are actually live links. So as you know, this will actually be put online. Click here, takes you directly to those resources, both in Spanish and English. On page 11, letter B, you've gone through it, I just want to kind of reiterate again, that's the legislation that dictated the process for Excel and the academically challenging curriculum to enhance learning. As Mr. Kennedy mentioned, yes, there was a committee early on that actually looked at those processes. When this legislation came out, we regularly met to take legislation and adapt it into common language. So as you see that language there, you will see it both elementary, middle, and high school, so that there's, it's a common language. The only thing that was actually changed in this, and that was the 18 credit, and I'll leave that for the high school. But that is the pages that we've added in there. If you turn to page 14, letter C, this is actually where I pulled out from the previous portion and put it into this area for high school courses taken by middle school students. We're finding more and more students taking high school courses. If you look at our, this just kind of gives you an example of a six-year study of how Citrus County has actually increased in the number of students participating in Algebra I honors and then Geometry I honors.
How'd we do on Algebra I?
I didn't remember. Share that with you, sir.
I'm sorry, I missed out for any question.
I thought maybe that graph was in our passion.
It is not, ma'am. I will be more than happy to put it in our Dropbox and share that with you if you'd like me to, yes. As middle school students, we had a 98.48% of students that had a level of three and above. And again, remember, three is passing. And then 1.52 with, that had a level two. In the geometry, we had a 97.6% pass rate for geometries taken by middle school students with a 2.4% of students that got a two, level two.
So what, how'd you drop the ball? You didn't get a hundred?
I will say again, as Mrs. Nobles said many times, we really do-
I know she said a T behind the door.
We are very inclusive. We go through a very rigorous process. Again, it's a multitude of placement, the Orleans Hannah, the scores that they're having on their FCAT. One of the changes for next year, I don't know if, one of the things that we've basically taken advantage of each year in regards to testing at the middle school is we actually will have students take grade eight mathematics, and if they are in Algebra I, they'll also take the Algebra I end-to-course exam. That stops now. It will not, we'll no longer do that next year. Students will actually be taking their end-to-course exam course in which they are actually included in. So that's kind of also a level playing field for the rest of the district. Mr. Kennedy, you didn't ask me about civics. You want to know about civics?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. Civics, for the first time, remember again, first year that it's given, you don't get five levels. It's actually a T score, and those T scores come out in numbers 20 through 80. And they basically break that down into three levels. I believe 20, about 40 points, yeah, right, 20 points per level, so 20 to 40. We actually had 41% of our students who took the exam, and by the way, there was 1,119 students that actually took the exam. 41% of our students scored in that 60 to 80, which is the top, top third percent. The state's average was 35 for the three. So really excited about the work that those civics teachers did this year, and again, of course, our students. So on page 14, letter C, we've kind of outlined what actually is going to be the requirement. And if you look on that sheet here, again, the challenge, and I have some notes on there is that-
Excuse me, I was thinking about the civics, I'm delayed. The test.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it the same test, take away?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, just like the Algebra I, the biology, all US history. Yes, ma'am. And I, I don't know if you shared that with the board about the civics results. I can send that on to you if you don't have it.
Mr. Clotter, if, just for those, again, those students that struggle a little bit, and they're taking that civics EOC, because that's really our barrier test now, the middle school, one of them, but now kind of our new barrier test. How conceivably low of a letter grade could a student get and still, and I guess I would say failed the EOC, but still be able to pass the course?
I don't have that. I know that we basically, again, our process is we convert. We take the score that they actually got on their 30, on their 30%, and we actually convert that to a percentage. So there are an A, B, C, D, and an F. And I will tell you that typically, our district actually has a scale that does not include an F range for students that perform on the end-to-course exam for their first year. We've been doing that ever since algebra, we've had many, many conversations. But as that second year comes into place, then we actually do break down that scale, but again, it's on that high side. So a C would equate to a 79%, and that would be the 30% calculation. But I would basically, and then that's calculated as 30%, but I'd have to get back to you on some of the specifics.
If I'm a eighth grader and I come in before the second semester, and my parents say they want me to take just the EOC, oh, what would my score, because my score then would be my grade?
Yeah, if you scored a level three-
Or do I not get a grade? I just get, I get it, I just fulfilled the requirement?
You fulfilled the requirement. And again, it would be like the capping that we would have. But again, it's not like the high school where it's like a-
It's not going to go into a-
What did you say?
It does not allow, it does not say-
You can't cap that course.
You can't cap the course, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So you would have to then take it virtually, or you would have to take it in school?
If they wanted to take the course?
Yeah, I mean, if you-
Or you don't have to. Yeah, if you-
Oh, I thought if I'm a first semester eighth grader and I come in in November-
And you don't have a-
And I don't have that, and I come from out of state, then I would, then I would have to-
You have, you have to take the course. We would put you in there. But I'm thinking-
I was thinking whether they could just cap the course, but the answer is there's no capping on that course. Okay.
Now again, I think there's another document that we have, that I have, that I share with you, kind of a timeline of our implementation. That 30%, it's not a must-pass for the end-to-course exam. It is the calculation that's going to take place next year. But again, we have a process where it's in seventh grade, so if the child actually fails that civics course, we then have an opportunity in the eighth grade to recover that course. And we typically will be using the E2020 because that E2020, we do have the civics course included in there. So again, our backup, our intervention, if you will, would be if those students did not pass the end-to, that course, then we'd actually be assisting them with support in their eighth grade with that E2020 course. I believe, again, the state assessments and the chart that is on page 23 and the language, again, Mr. Simon had provided that to us, that it was a nice little snapshot of what is actually paper and pencil and what is computer-based. Again, with people, with so many students that are in that acceleration at the middle school, we included that both middle and high schools so that way they have that reference. And that's basically the highlights of the middle school changes. And just to kind of remind the board, and I'm going to turn it over to Gail in just a minute here, but we are looking at not having hard copies of this. This will actually be posted online as soon as we leave on July 8th. The student progression plan as draft form will be posted on the internet, so that way they can refer to that there. Again, I do this every time I have an opportunity. I think without a director of secondary education, it does provide us with zeroing in, and I tell my, I tell the schools all the time, "When in doubt, call me." Please don't get to that situation where you have an eighth grader who has basically failed geometry and we don't have an alternative. Because once you are on that accelerated path for students, and you'll see I've listed that here, we've got to have some scenarios that we can kind of play out because it's now, you have to pass those three courses. If they fail algebra, you know, what do we do at that point? Is virtual, or what are some of our mechanisms that we have in place? So again, with Ms. Nobles, again, with her knowledge of the high school, does an admirable job, so it does give us an opportunity to pinpoint on some of those levels. So if you're all right, you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Nobles.
Just Mr. Clotter, we don't have a paid secondary director. We do have one, and that's you.
It is a lot of us, so I thank you for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's, as Mr. Clotter said, a lot of clarification is still coming out. In fact, I ran upstairs just to listen to a conference call on industry certification, you know, one-time conference call, and it's at 10 o'clock, so you run to meet those type of deadlines. That's where. The high school student progression plan, we took this opportunity because between 1076, between 850, and between 7031, basically, it was a complete rewrite of our high school student progression plan. For several years, the folks that deal with the student progression plan at the high school have complained about, "It's hard to find stuff." So we took this opportunity to try to clarify, move some things around, as well as then insert new language. The beginning, basically, of our student progression plan is very much like the rest of the previous student progression plans. We have added the information regarding McKinney Vento. Page four, on the student progression plan, the state uniform transfer of high school credits was revised by the State Board of Education as well as statute for the uniform transfer of high school credits. Basically, what they had done previously was to change things, getting ready for geometry and biology to become must-pass. And then last year, when they relented on that and moved that back to those not being must-pass for credit, that changed the transfer policy. So they basically have rewritten both of those. We added on page seven, we, first of all, we removed the failure due to excess absences, that being passed by the board at the last meeting. And we have added to that information regarding AES, just some information so that that was contained within. We have updated the entire virtual learning options, that being a lot more significant than it has in the past for pages nine through 12. We have updated on page 14, the CAP program and all of the information regarding CAP as regard to high school credit. Acceleration options are a big portion that we now must talk about in our student progression plan, and those start on page 14 and 15, as well as page 16. Trying to give all of the information regarding APIB, dual enrollment, career pathways, CAP, early admission to college. We reorganized the section regarding IB. As Mr. Bittner and I spoke, he felt that we should arrange it according to kind of chronologically as the student would progress. In other words, into what it would take to get into the ninth grade PIPs program, then into the 11th grade IB program. So we have that information rearranged at that point in time. We have language still in our student progression plan regarding correspondence courses. It was interesting to hear a couple people that didn't even know what a correspondence course was. Personally, I remember the days of mailing things back and forth, but definitely virtual has taken over that. So we deleted all of the information regarding correspondence courses. Did we delete it?
People don't know what it is.
Pages 21, 324, we updated all of the graduation requirements. It's nice, for the first time, to have one set of graduation requirements for the entire group of students that are in high school. It's an amazing type thing for us, because if you were ever upstairs outside of my office, there were pink sheets, green sheets, blue sheets, yellow sheets, according to what cohort. Now we have it all as one group of students. I would ask that at the bottom of page 23, where we outline the online learning credit, when 850 was signed on Friday, that now gives us the opportunity for driver's ed online, for that to be allowed for any cohort of students. And since this has been something that has waved back and forth, I would ask that we add one sentence to this about online learning, basically saying that driver's ed online does fulfill the requirement- basically saying that driver's ed online does fulfill the requirement for all cohorts, and I'd like to add that to, to clarify, since we said it didn't in the past. And now, what was interesting was ten seventy-six last year said it was not allowed. Then seventy thirty-one tried to further clarify it this year, saying it wasn't allowed for certain cohorts, and that passed, and then eight fifty repealed both of them. So that just goes to show that this has been something that has kind of waffled back and forth. But I do feel that for clarification, since it has gone back and forth, we do need to add that. We have added the waiver chart on page twenty-four, and that is the options for students to meet the PE and/or personal fitness requirement through other opportunities. This has been in legislation, however, it was further clarified in legislation this year. And the one thing that the counselors asked for was, can you put it in a chart so that I know exactly what it is that is waived and how? So I have attempted to do that in a method that would be easier for them to read.
Ms. Nobles, is it statute why a competitive sport is not counted as a PE credit? Because it certainly appears that, 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 you know, one meets the physical requirement.
Okay, if you will look at the second line of the waiver chart.
Okay.
It says two seasons of an interscholastic sport at the JV or varsity level, and a single better on the personal fitness competency test. So that's what would be waived.
Okay.
So it is.
Is that new to statute?
No, that's.
That was, so.
That's there. The, the problem is that sometimes students want to do the, they take the, haven't taken the personal fitness portion of it, but that weighs the activity piece of it. So they, they, it's kind of a combination type situation.
And the personal fitness, though, is that typically a freshman course? That's part of the health and?
Typically, students take personal fitness their freshman year.
Okay.
It, it's not required to be, but.
So if they did two competitive sports after that, that would in theory then meet the phys, the, the rest of the physical.
The activity piece of.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We, on pages, well, what would have been on page twenty-five and twenty-six, the three-year college and the three-year career diploma, that was taken out by ten seventy-six last year. And then we do still have an eighteen-credit option, being a portion of Excel, so that was added into. Page twenty-seven, we updated the early graduation information as required by legislation as well. On page twenty-eight and twenty-nine, high school equivalency diploma. We typically just call it the GED, but GED is actually one method that there is a high school equivalency diploma. So the state is recognizing GED as our source, but they ask us to please call it the high school equivalency diploma because they could or choose to get another vendor, so to speak, with the GED.
Have you ever explored other vendors besides GED?
That's typically from the state that, that awards that contract. We updated and included the high diploma designations, which were new last year with ten seventy-six.
Ms. Nobles, I, I don't see, where, where would I find special diplomas?
That is going to be in the ESE section that we'll get to.
Okay, thank you.
That is one thing that we did in the reorganization of this. We have had a lot of people being confused when we had the things integrated together. We felt that it was that because of changing legislation, that we needed to move the ESE portion so that we could address several of the things that are specifically for ESE students.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles.
Okay. On page thirty-one, there were some course substitutions that were available, that were taken out by ten seventy-six. So we've removed those. On page thirty-one, out-of-state high school diploma programs. In the past, we have called that section Penn Foster, and we need to talk about Penn Foster. Penn Foster, I have been notified, has changed their requirements. Pennsylvania has changed and upped their graduation requirements. Also, Penn Foster has undergone Saks accreditation. In so doing, instead of our students having to have two credits via, to receive a Penn Foster diploma, it is now at five and a half. The cost would go from what we have been paying at eight hundred to twenty-two hundred dollars. There are a lot of other concerns that I have regarding this. One of the piece of it said that they would, we have students who struggle to get through two credits. Five and a half is almost insurmountable for our students. And they told me that of three credits, that they would not be eligible to transfer back to Citrus County. And I have very big concerns about paying for credits that are not transferable. I am in conversation, Marion County, as an example, uses a company that gets a Virginia diploma. So we're in the process of talking to them. I am understanding that the requirements there are three credits to get a diploma, which may be more achievable for our students. However, I have not talked to the representative. I have a meeting scheduled in the middle of July with him, and I will get more information. So that is why you see Penn Foster removed out of here. And then just kind of a, a mention of an out-of-state diploma program, and we'll see what comes, and then I will be back, I'm sure, to discuss that at a workshop with the board.
What about the program that CERMI's been using? And I apologize, the name escapes me. Now, they had one that was a Florida-based program, but it was similar. Do you remember, Mike, the name of that one? For some reason, STAR keeps sticking in my head, or MURB.
It's still a Florida?
It's, it's a Florida diploma, but I, I was under the impression that it was.
Then you still have to have ALGAP, which is.
I, I thought it was a private one.
I do remember that conversation with them, I can't remember the name either, and that's what I thought Ms. Nobles was going to say.
I, I thought so too, that's why, I, I think we may need to explore that, because I believe it was a private Florida schooling program, and it was similar to, they use it in the same way we use Penn Foster. So.
Okay, that would be another one for me to.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles.
To find out about, investigate. Pages thirty-two through thirty-six, I understand that Mr. Simon has already spoke a lot about the state assessment and how that has changed. We have included a lot of information regarding assessments of all types, because we believe that there were a lot of things that in the past that we have not had in our student progression plan. For example, FAIR and some of the newest of the assessments, so we have made sure that we have included those in our progression plan. We've updated information that was required in legislation regarding remediation. We have also included other information that we are required to have regarding post-secondary information, that being the state university system admission requirements, the Florida College System, Bright Futures, Talented Twenty, all of those are requirements that we have to follow. So we have included information regarding that. We've included and updated the information regarding high school grading, taking away the failure due to excess absences in this area as well. Information regarding final exams, also that EOC's calculation into was a thirty percent. We have updated the section on grade weighting. Also in eight fifty was a requirement that CTE courses that are, lead to an industry, industry certification be weighted the same as honor courses, so we've updated that language. We have updated the information, basically, the entire exceptional student education section has been rewritten to conform to the many pieces of legislation. I cannot thank Carl, Nancy, and Callie, they rewrote it. Then Nancy went to her meeting, and then she came back and rewrote the rewrite. So if you have questions regarding that.
I'd like to know about special diploma. Because it's concerning what we hear, and I don't know whether what we're hearing is, is really the case.
It probably is.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Thank you, Gail. Well, don't be afraid, never fear.
I'm not with you there.
It'll be all right. Since eight fifty did get signed, we know that Senate Bill eight fifty will be part of our, our student progression plan, and we already embedded that, knowing that that was going to come to pass. At my conference, the explanation that I received from our bureau chief is that we're going to be looking at different pathways to achieve a standard diploma. So there will be pathways for students who in the past would receive a special diploma to achieve a standard diploma, but it will require the transition IEP team and parent as a member of that to design what that will look like, and it'll, it'll involve guidance counselors being as important, if not more important than they've been in the past, and being a part of those teams and making those decisions as, as a group. Special diploma is still available to those students who were designated as special diploma students till they graduate. However, they will have the option of making a shift to the standard diploma, the new diploma. And the special diploma won't be repealed until the following school year. So we've got a little transition time to take a look at, and we've got to wait for state board rule to be developed so that we know exactly what that's going to mean. But I think what it does is it just continues to say to the IEP team, you have to be accountable for making the determination of what the outcome's going to be for the student. And every one of those annual meetings has got to be critically important and dealt with, and they're probably going to take a little bit longer, those meetings, but I think you're all aware that we were able to replace the position we've had in the past, so there's extra days at the high schools for ESE specialists. So I think we're going to be okay. It's just going to take some training and some heavy-duty studying of what the implications are.
So our Crest students that we go to graduation, what would their diploma look?
Their diploma will either be a standard diploma attached to some transcripts that shows what pathway led them to that diploma. And I think there are at least twenty-seven other states that only have one diploma option. I shouldn't say a number because I'm not positive that that's, but it, it really is. I mean, when people go to move to the next stage as they graduate, they want to go into the military, they want to go over to adult education and take some courses, people look at their transcripts. That one piece of paper isn't what determines what their next steps are going to be. So I think it's just going to mean that we're going to have to pay more attention to those transcripts. There will be some students at Crest who may be on the unique skills curriculum, who are on Florida alternate assessment, who would have received a special diploma in the past, who may stand on that stage and be handed a standard diploma. There may be some who only achieve a certificate of completion. I don't think it's going to make that significant a difference if we do our jobs well.
And I'm confident that you will, because I know what I believe motivates you and your staff. But I do worry for those families and those kids that stand up there after they've worked so hard to basically be handed a certificate of completion.
I, we've got to take that decision very seriously, and the parents have to be holding our hands every step of the way as we travel that path.
And, and many of those parents do, you know, they work with us, you work with them, and, and that is significant. But there are those families that, that don't, and so those are still concerns. I, I, I don't think that it was entirely intentional to do that, or I don't, appears to be for the legislature to just take that away, but it certainly is a consequence that I'm not sure had a lot of thought. And I'll be interested to see if the, the groups, the various support groups don't get out and have something to say about it, because I think this really took everybody by surprise.
I think we're going to see some changes made in the next session, but.
But at this point, we cannot, we, we certainly have had to change our materials, both in what we give out in the pupil, pupil progression plan, as well as what we then, I guess, are informing new freshmen heading into Crest that would have been special diplomas.
Absolutely. It's going to require a lot of education for a lot of folks, and it's already on the agenda for our first ESE specialist meeting, how critical this is.
Thank you, Ms. Haines. Board members, do you have any other questions on that?
I was just curious, this discussion just triggered a memory. There was a program out there, I don't know if it's still being utilized at the secondary level. It was titled something about ready to work. And it was a filtering program that developed skills that transitioned, and it produced an actual certificate that defined very, very vividly exactly what skills have been developed and mastered. Is that still out there?
Well, I think it's going to be integrated into these pathways. There's the ability for students to earn credit and graduate because of work experience, because of different courses they take towards vocational. Gail didn't leave me.
I didn't leave you.
When she left earlier, I thought, she better come back. I'm not going to do the whole part on high school, but. I think it, it makes us aware of all the things that we're accountable for. What does this student want to do? I think at the beginning of this year, I came to you all and I gave you all wristbands, and I talked about our circles of success. We've spent the whole year bringing in Kenny Korcheck to talk to our students. We've been training our ESE specialists in preparation for these changes, and we didn't really know we're that close, we're even coming. We have got to look at every single individual student who has a disability and lay out a plan, whether it's what they're going to do as adults. We have students from Crest that have gotten jobs at McDonald's. We have students that are at our nursing centers. We've placed six students in employment this year that have significant cognitive disabilities. They graduated with a special diploma. In two to four years from now, those same students, or students with those same skills, because of the pathway designed by their IEP, would be handed a standard diploma and go on to be tax-paying, working adults. So exactly what that's going to look like, we're going to have to wait for state board rule, which we probably won't get till November. But I think we're ahead of the game as far as being prepared to make sure our students don't suffer and our parents know what's going on.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haines.
I think you can see now why we chose to put everything regarding ESE within one section of our student progression plan, because who it actually deals with, et cetera, needed to be clearly defined. Also, then on page fifty-eight. Also then on page 58, we have a chart for those that are a little bit, need things in boxes and squares, and that is our diploma requirements, scholar designation and merit designation as to what. The one thing that also is required is for the students that Nancy just spoke about, that they have to work toward a designation on their diploma, and that is one thing, so we have the other information there for that. And that, in a nutshell, is the changes in high school.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles. Okay, board members, did you need a break? Especially before budget, we just want to take ourselves. So we will come back here, we're going to shoot for 11:25.